It being 7:01, we'll call this meeting to order. If we can begin with the roll call.
Councilor Wong?
Here.
Councilor Holmes?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Here.
Councilor Ratliff?
Here.
We have four.
Thank you very much. Is Mr. Adams with us? Mr. Adams? If not, Chief King, would you mind?
Mayor, if I might, before the meeting speaks, I think it'd be appropriate if we took a minute to acknowledge that last night this community lost a pillar of our community in Dr. Isabel Baker and the work and the sacrifice and the service that she put in. It's not only her family, but also into the community. And I know she's a mentor to several of us on this stage and probably several of you in the audience, so if we could just take a moment to recognize her?
Thank you very much.
Indeed. If everyone would stand, please. Most creationarily, Father, Lord, thank you for gathering us together once again to do city business. Thank you for affording us a country, a community, that allows for our voices to be heard. Lord, we ask that you're with us tonight, that you comfort those that are hurting in this community, Lord, from the tragic loss. Lord, just help our hearts and our minds to be pure tonight, to make the decisions that you'd have us to make, to follow your will. Lord, just lead, guide, and protect us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. If you wouldn't join in the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
We will begin with public comments. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in the meeting's agenda. Individuals be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Cumulative total of all comments from the public will not exceed five minutes or 15 minutes. Preference will be given to Talalco residents, and in compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during this public comment period. Are there any comments from the public? John, I couldn't see your hand.
Yes.
And please give your name for the question.
My name is Dr. John Uzadova, with a PhD, Certified Financial Forensics, and I'd like to, as this city council's benefit, to help the citizens of Talalco. I did, now, the Talalco Hospital Authority is a component unit of the city of Talalco, and the last financial statement issued June 30th of 2018 indicated estimated third-party payment settlements to the patients of $1,744,243. That means they owe the patients that kind of money. Okay? Now, part of the remedy that they indicated is they're going to have the CFO remedy the situation. At the time of the issue of the report, the CFO had previously resigned, and his CBA license was revoked. Just to give you some insight, in addition to that, the reason that we're, because it were an estimate, is because the Northeastern Health System has not filed timely Medicare reports since 2013, and they've been penalized every year since then. So I would request your assistance to help the people that overcharge and overbill, recapture their money and be reimbursed. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Isabel. Are there any other comments?
They're going to a software change.
Hearing none. We will move to the consent agenda. The items that are placed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate routine items to be approved by one motion. Any item proposed on the consent agenda not meeting with approval of all council members will be removed and heard in regular session.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second? There is a motion as second. Is there any discussion? If not, roll call.
Councilor Wong?
Yes.
Councilor Holmes?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Announcements, presentations, and reports includes the recognition of Josh Gerdner for five years in the police department. Mr. Gerdner, are you here? That was it? Okay. Is there a report from the library?
No, not at the time.
Okay, thank you. Tourism?
I'm Gina. I am the Director of Tourism for Talalco, and please note that there has been a correction in the Director's Report.
Thank you.
You're welcome. As, we're doing something a little different tonight with a presentation, just to go into a little bit more detail. And as a brief overview, some of the things that we'll touch on is we're advertising in three publications, one international motorcycle publication focusing on spring and fall, another one is an American road publication, and the next one is a southern travel publication. We're also promoting Talalco as a film location destination with the Oklahoma Film Commission, and a meeting and tour is being scheduled with their workshop in Scotting Crew in October. Our website is in process of redesign, and there's an initial review scheduled for August 30th. And we're actually rescheduling that for the second week in October because we've been a little bit behind on that. The retraining users of Chair Talalco's website has increased 17.17% from the same time last year. New users have increased 19.79% over last year. The tourism department is creating itineraries for motorcycle groups, automobile groups, reunions, and this is all to increase visitors' traffic during the fall season. Social media numbers have skyrocketed during the Tidy Up 10 Killer cleanup campaign, which increased exposure to the Talalco Lake or to the Talalco and Lake 10 Killer area. Increased Madison Stone contract package is going to include two more refinet tickets rather than just the two, so now we have to four, but the price remains the same as far as our sponsorship goes. And then there's a few positive changes made with the hotel company that we're using now, which is Holiday Inn, and then also the VIP package. Let me change that. Are you changing the clicker thing? There you go. Okay. I don't know who's, are you? Yeah, all right. This page, and you all have copies of this, so I don't need to go through every detail of it. This publication right here is the motorcycle publication. It's an international publication, and it's called Road Runner Motorcycle Touring and Travel, and we all, we will actually be a featured story in their publication. They're coming out to do an interview, and they're spending a whole entire week doing drone footage as well as photography. And they're, right now, they're actually filming in Germany, and then when they get back from there, they'll be coming here, which is really exciting to have them coming to Talalco. One of the things that we're actually really working on is making Talalco more of a motorcycle premier touring area, and so we've been doing lots of footage with our motorcycles and our roads, and we have joined over, I think it's 15 motorcycle groups that are international. I should probably just have the clicker for you. The Oklahoma Film Commission is, is really becoming quite an important entity of tourism in Oklahoma, and we're actually really excited to visit with them and make Talalco a premier location for filming. The reason why we're redoing our website is because it's very slow, and so we're redesigning it just for the fact that our bounce rate is a little bit too high, and we're wanting to make it a little faster.
One more.
Yeah, one more. There you go. This is simply our health check. We are up 24, basically 25% over last year with our users, and 17% over in our sessions from last year, which is exciting. And this just means that we have more traffic on our website. We have a 20% increase over last year in our active users and 20% increase over our 28-day users. And our sessions are up 17% over last year with our page views up 12%, essentially. One of the things that we do want to focus on, that we're really thrilled about, our invite is the Antigone Vehicle Fund that's coming September 26th, and it's all pre-1916 vehicles. And there will be 40 vehicles with two people, two passengers in each vehicle. And then Tidy Up 10 Killer was actually a wonderful event, bringing just more awareness to Talalco with just one of our posts alone reached 10,693 people. And one last thing that we'd like to do, a kind of a kudos for would be the Holiday Inn Express. They were the only hotel last month that were above their business from the year before, and they also have a 4.8 out of 5 rating, so we would really like to congratulate them. And then we're also looking very forward to Madison Stone coming up in two weeks. And all of that is in your package.
I do appreciate the new package.
Oh, thank you.
The visuals.
I'll have it.
Is there a report from the Main Street Association?
Good evening.
I've got the chamber one, too.
Oh, okay. You want him to go first?
Very good. Sorry about that. It's out of order.
All right. Hi, everybody. Stephen Wright, the chairman of the chamber. I found out that we had this time slot, so why not tell you guys some good news about what we got going on? Welcome our new members first. KTK Steakhouse, everybody knows them. Everybody's eating there, right? The next one. Talalco Church of the Nazarene. Edward Jones Financial Advisor, Jared Vanderheiden. We just had his ribbon cutting two weeks ago? Yeah, two weeks ago. There's some new trees going up in that parking lot right there, things like that. Excellent. Relay for Life Cherokee County. The fossil study, Rock and Living Fossil Trees, this is Dusty Rhodes. Hopefully, everybody knows him. Really nice guy, really loves children, really loves fossils, so he's very passionate about that. Next slide. Muskogee Federal Credit Union and the OSU College of Osteopathic Medicine at the Cherokee Nation, and we all know about that, so we welcome them. Next slide. Chamber news. Go ahead. Class members selected for Leadership Talalco 23. This year's leadership class consists of newer and seasoned professionals from a variety of industries within our community. One of the primary functions of Leadership Talalco is to grow, develop future community leaders and provide the class with an opportunity to give back to the community. If you don't know what Leadership Talalco is, check it out at the chamber. It is a really great opportunity to get to know the town and get to know your business leaders and your community leaders, and it's really, really helpful. Lived here my whole life, and I found out so many things that I didn't know about our town, so really good looking at. Go ahead, the next slide. These are our members of the new class. I won't bother reading through all that, but as you can see, we're well represented across different companies, industries, and entities. On the next slide, Small Business Resource Center. We just launched this on our website. If you have a small business, are thinking about starting a small business, or have questions about anything to do with small business, we now have a resource center on our website. We are also revamping our website, make it more user-friendly, and give the chamber members more tools that they can use, make it a little more resourceful, so. Next slide. We did say yes in support of the new tax that's coming. We do believe it is very important to keep our streets in good shape, to keep sidewalks coming. It all comes back around to businesses. If your community has good streets and people can walk around, and it's safe, and, you know, friendly to motorists and pedestrians, then it matters to businesses, it matters to people moving to town. It has a whole encompassing effect on the town, so we are in support of that tax. On to the next. Ah, okay. I'm in real estate, so I thought I would throw a few stats at you guys, just kind of tell you what the market's doing. Going to the next one. Talalco listings sold year-to-date, this is with anything that's on the market. This is not any particular company's listing, this is everybody. So 200 homes sold, 35 tracts of land, and eight commercial properties. Next slide. Cherokee County, 290 homes, 87 tracts of land, and 10 commercial properties. I think 11 sold last year, so we're looking to beat that commercial property. That doesn't seem like much, but it's a pretty good amount of commercial. Next one. Where are buyers coming from 2019 year-to-date? You can see that 56% are from Cherokee County, 36% are from counties outside of Cherokee, and 8% are from out-of-state. If you look at our Oklahoma out-of-Cherokee county buyers, that is going up from last year, so the out-of-county buyers locating here are kind of making the market shift a little bit. Out-of-state usually hovers around 8% or, you know, 12%, so that's pretty good. I made a very complex slideshow here. Upcoming events. Go ahead. September 11th, Women in Business Breakfast. Our, Ms. Mayor, is it you?
And Councilor Wong.
And Bree? All right. Very good. These ladies will be at the Women in Business Breakfast. I will not be in attendance. September 13th, oh, go back, go back. September 13th is our AM Live. AM Live is an event that we have where we meet at a local business network, get together, and get introduced to what they have going new. That's at Threats Consignment on Main Street. On the 18th is the My Talalco Committee. If you're interested in volunteering, helping clean up the town, go check that out. And then on the 24th is our, you're good, you're good, I got it, I saw it before you changed it, is the chamber meeting. So that's my report. Thank you for giving us this time. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for the report.
I thought Stephen was cooking breakfast. I think that's what I was told. Aren't you cooking breakfast for us?
I, I don't know how to make cereal, but.
All right. Jamie Hale, Talalco Main Street. I do not have a fancy slideshow, I'm sorry. I may have to up my gain just a little bit. I did submit a written report, but I did want to speak to you just a few minutes about something that had been brought to my attention after I had submitted my report. The Oaks Wagon Fest will happen again this year. They hold it on Thursday or Friday, I can't remember which day. And that is going to take place on October 12th. This is an event that has happened for several years. It was once hosted by Main Street. We are now, it will be hosted by Foul Air Club, which is who hosted it last year, and Talalco Main Street will be a sponsor of that. So I just wanted to give you a heads up. That takes place on Main Street, Muskogee Avenue, from Going Snake to Morgan Street. So they have asked that we have a road closure for that date beginning, they say 8:00 AM. I like to give a little buffer and say 7:30, and then they said probably no later than 3:00 PM. So just wanted to let you guys in on that bit of information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I believe we today speak about the street department. Do we have any other city departments that want to give a report tonight? It seems none.
Mayor, I just want to say that I appreciate the people that put together a presentation for us. Since we have vested interest in each of these, it's very important that we, we know what's going on, so thank you very much. Very good.
Most definitely. Thank you. Okay. Item number five was discussion possible action on any items removed from the consent agenda. We have none, so item number six, discussion possible action to appeal the decision of the animal control officer to ban a vicious dog. This is Director of Planning and Development, Clinton Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. It's a delicate issue, banning a dog when we take it serious. I believe it was, Mayor, your first meeting, Councilor Ratliff, your first meeting, that we had a similar item, and it's unfortunate that we're here again discussing the same This event happened on August 16th at Walmart, and the dog owner, which is Ms. Huber, Lisa Huber, I'm sure you'll hear from her later, pet her dog in Walmart as a servicing. As they were walking down the aisle, they came across paths with this little girl, and from all the information that I've gathered, the police report, and speaking with the dog owner and everything, that it was unprovoked. The child didn't attempt to pet the dog or anything, they were just crossing paths, and as you can see from the picture, the dog reached out and bit her on the arm. And so with that, for us, it was a hard decision, but it was an easy decision. Like I mentioned, in May, we had a different dog here that had been banned, and we, the owner appealed the decision, and I think everything that, everything that we discussed was, what if this was a kid? Well, we lucked out then, and it wasn't, it was another dog, and we still chose to ban that animal from the city. And I think if we start second-guessing ourselves on this, that's a precedent that we don't want to set, and it's a slippery slope. It's that slippery slope argument. You let one, what are you going to say to the next person? This was a pretty clear-cut case. This is pictured, obviously, still in Walmart, and then here's a picture a week later. You know, I mentioned that it's a service dog, and after speaking with the owner, it's not in fact a service dog. It had never received any training, professional training, or a certificate, and the owner was walking the dog around in Walmart. And so I think the owner had more responsibility to ensure that their animal was safe, if they were willing to bring it into that environment. This is a little bit that I found about the ADA requirements on service animals. I'll give you a second to read that. And here's some of the specific reasons that you would get a service animal, and there's actual titles for those types of dogs and those professions. And this elevates the training of an animal to be in these, because you read in the definition up before, they're not a pet. It's, it's a profession of that dog, and very serious training goes in to that. And I just felt like it was irresponsible of the owner to have a dog that hadn't had the proper training in that environment with so many people and children in such close contact, and I think that needs to be considered in their decisions. I think the parent of the young lady is here, and I think the owner of the dog is here, and we'll speak with that. So it's really all I have to say unless you guys have any questions for me.
Hearing none.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Hi, I'm Jamie. And it's my daughter that got bit. This is her, and she got bit that day. It was her first week of school. She was going to Walmart to get grapes, you know, because that was a snack she wanted, and to get a toy. Sadly, she didn't get the toy. While walking through the frozen goods, she was holding on to the cart, eye level with the dog, it just turned around and bit her arm. I wasn't there, she was with her nana. I got called, and I thought it was just bizarre, because who gets bit by a service dog in Walmart? That should not happen. And like, there's a difference between a service dog and an emotional support dog. I'm still unsure the exact task that the owner's dog was trained for, whether service or emotional support, and if it's emotional support, the dogage should never have been taken into Walmart, as per there's a sign that says emotional support dogs not permitted, and it had on a vest, you know, that said "in training." So to me, that's just, you know, irresponsible. I don't know what the long-term effects will be on my daughter, because, you know, she might forever be scared of dogs, have her own issues, so I hope you'll continue to deem the dog as dangerous and stand by your decision to keep the dog banned from the city, and I thank you for your time.
Hello. My name is Lisa Huber, and as the mother of the child just stated, I am the owner of the dog. I have everything written down, because I'm not good at public speaking. Those of us that have PTSD don't do well in public. Let me start off by saying that the gentleman that just spoke is misinformed. As the ADA prints in their information packets, anyone, anyone can call the Department of Justice and request all information regarding guidelines, regulations, and rules on service animals, not just dogs, but service animals, and they will gladly mail you for free a big manila envelope full of their, their rights, rules, regulations, and a page also called Frequently Asked Questions. And on the page that says Frequently Asked Questions, item number five says that the question is, does a service dog have to be professionally trained? And the answer is no. It does not have to be professionally trained, and disabled people are by ADA standards allowed to train their own dogs. We are not allowed to give the finishing tests. The Canine with Good Citizen, Canine Good Citizen Award is one, Public Access Award is another. Those need to be administered by certified and lined-up trainers. I never represented my dog as a service dog. I have never told anyone in this town that Sebastian is a service dog. His vest has only ever said "in training," that is to let people know that he is not finished, he is not ready. We were working on our public access training. Sebastian and I have been in Walmart either daily or every other day for four months or longer. Nearly every single hourly employee that works on a regular basis at Walmart knows Sebastian's name and knows my name. Every manager in the store was perfectly comfortable week after week, month after month, with allowing us to both shop there and train there. I am, I'm going to say it to you again, I am so sorry for what happened to your daughter. However, the part that you said about you're afraid that your daughter will be, will be afraid of dogs, that was about the third thing that left my mouth after it happened. And your mother said, oh, don't worry about it, she lives with two dogs that size, she won't, she'll be fine. So.
I don't think I said that.
Yes, ma'am, you did.
I said she has two big dogs.
Okay, so she'll be fine, you said. You said she'll be fine. Okay, I'm sorry. I am not, I'm not here to be confrontational on your information.
I also said it was a service dog to me.
They also said it was a service dog to me.
I have never represented him as a service dog. If I had, his vest would say "service dog," not "in training."
You can move on, but your legal analysis doesn't really matter on that. It's his property, so.
Okay. So here, let me read, if you don't mind, if you'll humor me a minute. I'm really not good at public speaking. Sebastian is a Greater Swiss Mountain Dog puppy. He's just over a year old, 14 months to be exact. And for those of you that don't know, giant breed dogs don't mature until they're three. So he is still in the puppy stage. On that date when we were in Walmart, my puppy, whose name is Sebastian, who has been accompanying me to Walmart for months... Okay, I'm sorry, I miswrote something. Our, our intention when we purchased Sebastian was that he eventually become my psychiatric service dog. I was diagnosed in 2003 after an abduction beating and rape with PTSD and chronic anxiety disorder. I'm not telling you what my diagnosis is so that you will feel sorry for me. That is part of my life's journey that has led me to where I am today. But my diagnosis and my disabilities are well documented. I'm under a psychiatrist's care and seeing a therapist every single month, and have been since 2003. This is not some made-up thing so that I can have a dog. I don't want to elicit your pity, it's just part of my life's journey. When we began training sessions with Sebastian, I wrote to the U.S. Department of Justice and the Americans with Disabilities Act on service dogs. They sent a large packet of information, as I mentioned, rules and regulations for people using service animals, in which, okay, I already told you about the paragraph under Frequently Asked Questions that says that disabled people are allowed to train their own dogs, and that there is no requirement that the training part be done by a professional trainer. I'm fully aware that I don't have the capability of doing the completion work myself. I've been working for several months with him to get him used to crowds, noises, and being out in public. Bear with me. When we walked down the aisle that day at Walmart, there was, the grandmother was approaching, was pushing a cart, and the little girl was holding on to the cart, just as her mother said. The little girl wasn't even aware that she was passing Sebastian. She was looking the other way, and she held the cart. And yes, it was completely unprovoked. She did not try to reach out and pet the dog. She didn't squeal and startle him. I have no explanation for what, why he did what he did. However, I do want to point out, and if you look closely at the pictures, it was a nip. He did not clamp down on her arm, he did not shake her, he did not knock her down. And he's a big dog. If, if he wanted to attack her, that's, the outcome would have been different. I can't explain why he nipped her. He has a big mouth, and there are, there's the proof. He turned his head, and he nipped the girl on the arm, and he kept walking. So by that, I can honestly say that it was not an attack. I do want to clarify, I do want to clarify that though there are scraped areas of skin and bruises, no blood ran down her arm.
It bleed?
He, he neither mauled her nor knocked her down. Please understand when I say I'm not by any means trying to excuse what he did. Believe me when I tell you that I was heartbroken, and I'm sure that the grandmother would tell you that I, I cried just as hard and a lot longer than the little girl did. Not only was I sad for the little girl being so frightened, but I also realized at that moment, on that day, that my dreams of having this puppy achieve service dog status were over. I held the little girl's hand, I asked her if she would forgive me, and I asked her to forgive Sebastian. And I told her, do you know, even though he's big and scary, he's only a baby? I said, can you believe he's only just a year old? The little girl calmed down after a little bit, and this scrape on her arm was covered by a large Telpho pad band-aid. I did suggest immediately to the grandmother, within about five minutes, that we take the little girl to urgent care, to have her seen by a doctor, just to be safe. I offer to cover any and all costs of that visit.
Do you have a proposal for what to do with, of, in the future?
Okay. I'm, I'm almost there, if you'll humor me just one more minute. Here is what I have to offer, the Council. Since the incident, we have had Sebastian professionally evaluated by two licensed, certified, and really well-respected trainers in Tulsa. Both evaluations concluded that Sebastian's issues are puppy fear-based and not true aggression. And both evaluators believe that with proper training and conditioning, these issues can be fully resolved and overcome, especially considering his young age. Some people here, okay, I already said that, that he, the giant breeds mature at three. We would like the opportunity, and if you will closely consider this, we would like the opportunity to send Sebastian to Tulsa. And this would be hard for me, but it's for the best. We would like to send Sebastian to Tulsa, to a boot camp-style training facility. This means that he would be kept at the facility full-time, 24 hours a day, working several hours a day with a licensed trainer and behaviorist, while they work on fear and fear-based aggression issues. At the end of the training session, which could be anywhere from two to three weeks or longer, at the end of the training session, Sebastian will have been conditioned to and comfortable with children, other dogs, and will be able to behave accordingly to other dog, any other dogs on leashes as expect, are expected to behave. Minimum training time is three weeks. It could be as long as the certified trainer deems necessary, and he tests and determines Sebastian safe and ready to return to us to live only as a companion animal. I understand now, I understood that minute when it happened, that my dreams for him to help me with my disability are gone, okay? I, I bow out of that. However, if we can get him through the boot camp, if we can leave him there long enough to be trained, if the Council wants to set some standard of testing, if they want to consult their own trainer, we have several here in Talawka that would assess how far Sebastian has come, we'd be willing to do that. The place that we will send him to will offer the Council weekly updates by either phone or by email. And we just ask that after this training, he be allowed to come back to my home and to be a companion or a pet for myself and my elderly parents. I won't take him to Walmart, I won't take him into stores. We would walk in my neighborhood, only at which time he's deemed to be safe. I know that several dog cases have come before you guys already, and just like with the broad stroke of the pen, you banish the dogs. This is not those cases. This is different. I never meant any harm to anyone, much less a child. And by posting Sebastian's vest as service dog in training, in fact, it doesn't say service dog, it only says "in training," that was to let everybody know that you can't expect quite from him what you do everyone else. So we're willing to do whatever the Council deems necessary to rectify the situation and properly train Sebastian where he will not pose a threat to anyone. He's just a very young dog that needs more training and a second chance.
Thank you. Do we have questions?
Mayor Kaitlin, can I, can I speak for a moment? I am the father of the child. The scrapes you see on her arm are because the owner had pulled her away. He didn't clamp down, because he didn't have that opportunity, because the owner pulled him away. And being somebody who's been bit...
Oh, your name for the record, please?
Bubba Lee.
Thank you.
So, obviously, I caution you on considering this proposal. It goes back to my first point, that it would set a precedent for each one that comes before us, that, hey, sorry my dog bit, I'm going to send him to this training, I'm going to get a certification, and everything's going to be well in the universe. I'm willing to bet that dog that bit 10 inches higher and bit her on her face, you would already made a motion to deny the appeal. So I encourage you to back up your employees in the decisions that they made when they're sound and deny this appeal.
I think we all, everyone up here has young children or grandchildren that this very well could have happened to, and I will happily make the motion that we deny this appeal.
I have a question. So what happens, so if the appeal gets denied, then what timeline are we looking at? Does it goes back to the owner? So does the owner have a certain amount of time to...
Yep. So when I met with Ms. Huber, our first meeting since this incident happened, I gave two options. I said, you can sign this form that acknowledges the ban, your dog's been banned, not appealing that decision, and we'll give you as much time within reason to find your animal a new home. And I don't know how the word got out there, but all of a sudden, we, I can't remember what breed this is, but apparently it's such a desired breed that our animal control shelter started receiving calls from all over the country of people wanting to adopt this dog. And so I said, I recognize it's part of your family. If you need weeks to a month, you can work within that reason, as long as your dog stays quarantined at your home. If you appeal my decision, and you go to Council, and they uphold the ban, then your deadline is September 4th by close of business, and that's tomorrow. And then she would be asked to surrender the dog to Animal Control if she can't remove it from the city on her own.
And to be clear, she could have this dog in the family, anywhere outside of city limits.
Absolutely.
So it doesn't mean euthanasia?
No.
That would take over, so she could move it to another facility outside of city limits today?
Just outside of corporate limits.
So what is the rule there? I mean, if we give her, if we're able to rehome the dog without an appeal, and you can have 30 days to rehome the dog?
I said, time within reason, I didn't set a 30-day limit.
You just said 30 days.
I said a month. I said a few weeks, or more.
Okay. So then you said 31, depending on which month it is. To rehome the dog, but if you make a, if you appeal the decision, then you have a day. And so I just...
Well, the dog wasn't banned today.
Right.
Okay.
But I think there was some thought.
Technically, at his decision, he could have asked the dog to be out of the city limits at that point, until the appeal is filed.
We could have, we could have taken possession of the dog at Walmart and quarantined it for 10 days for rabies. But we chose to let her quarantine her dog at home.
I think possibly the concern is that by taking away someone's right to come question a decision, then we've been punitive by saying just one day. And so I think that that maybe is a little bit more of the concern about the disparity between those two periods of time.
Right. I mean, I don't think, just from listening to comments that are happening up here, that the dog is going to be able to stay. So now it is, how can we rehome the dog? Do we give the owner some time to rehome the dog, whether that be to go to the place in Tulsa and rehome it from there? Do we...
I'll bring you back to May. And the one that we, that you denied in May, the pit bull that bit another dog, that dog was gone the next day out of the city limits. We went and verified it. So I'm just, I'm just saying.
And I think, I mean, this has been, this, you've known about the incident since code enforcement took the report, since the police filed the report.
Correct.
She knew from that day going forward that that would, that, you know, she's on a, you know, a short leash, I guess. So, I mean, there's, there's, there's a timeframe, right? There's a timeframe, and she knew what the option, you know, she knew what the options were. And so I would hope that she's made arrangements for the dog, and I'll be honest, I'm surprised that euthanization isn't an option when it bites a child or bites another person. So I think, I think that she should, hopefully has taken this time to make arrangements.
Can I answer that, please? Quickly, yes. Him giving me these two options, saying, yes, sign this paper and acknowledge that your dog is vicious, and we'll give you a few extra days, that's like, if you'll forgive me, asking someone that's charged of a crime to cop a plea in court so that they'll get a lesser sentence. He did tell me those two options, but what he didn't tell me was how much time I would have. He said, well, we might give you a few days, but it won't be indefinite. But he didn't give me a clear time. Now, I do have options for the dog. And if y'all can't find it in your heart to be reasonable and, and give me a reasonable chance to train him, then so be it. But the seizure of the dog is not up for discussion, forgive me. I, I, I have options for the dog. The dog will be leaving Talawka City Limits tomorrow. I guess where I'm aggravated is that you felt perfectly comfortable from the date of the bite until 7 o'clock this evening, with the dog remaining at my house. There was no, nobody watching my house to make sure that he didn't escape.
You gave me your word he was staying in six-foot privacy, with a lock on the inside and all these other safety measures.
And he is.
That you wouldn't think would be necessary if it wasn't a vicious dog.
I, I had those safety measures when I had my boxer, and the reason being that when I moved to Talawka.
Mayor, I'm going to second that motion. Because we, we have, we have these ordinances, ordinances in place for this situation. I'm sorry that it happened...
Me too.
...to your dog, I'm sorry that it happened to you, and...
So I'm sorry that it happened in the shot.
Absolutely.
It's very unfortunate, and so...
So how, with that, the motion was to...
And my motion was to deny, to deny the appeal.
Okay. With no timeframe, stipulated?
Correct, it was to deny it, or in person, seconded, so...
So the one day, by end of day tomorrow?
I'm with what Mr. Johnson and staff had recommended in I-3, that we don't want to set dangerous precedents that would enable someone else to get hurt.
So we have a motion in the second? Could we have a roll call?
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
So, to be clear, how much time do I have? I mean, do I need to jump in the car right now and drive him out of city limits, or can I do it tomorrow?
Through end of day tomorrow. Item number seven, discussion possible action related to adoption of ordinance number 1290, 2019, Amendment Part 12, Planning, Zoning, and Development, Chapter 2, Zoning, General and District provisions of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Talawka, including but not limited to definitions and uses permitted in R1, Single Family Dwelling District, R2, Two-Family Dwelling District, R3, Multi-Family Dwelling District, C1, Neighborhood Commercial District, C2, General Commercial District, I1, Restricted Light Industrial District, and I2, Light Industrial District. Again, Mr. Johnson.
Blaine Grant on that, okay.
[laughing].
Sorry about that. So, we discussed this a few times. Last time I gave you a printout with some highlights of what we were proposing. This is kind of the, the top rung of what we're really looking at, changing. We left it broad with what Mayor Kaitlin just read. But these are kind of the pressing issues right here. right here. Read through that, and ask me any questions that you might have about what we're proposing. This is trying to just boil it down into the what, what we need to get done, what we're hoping to get done before our 90-day moratorium. We will have another public hearing regarding this next Wednesday at 5:30 in the council chambers, dedicated to this item only. And we'll have as much discussion about it as we so choose.
What date did you say?
Next Wednesday, which...
The 11th?
11th, yes.
At 5:00?
5:30.
So, does that mean, does that mean no action? Is this another...
This is a hearing? And there will be a public hearing with no action on Wednesday, the 11th?
You might want to table this as a regular meeting in October, in a way it's...
Okay. Well, I make a motion that we table it.
Well, Wednesday is going to be, we're posting it as a special meeting, so all the councilors can table it, so...
But we're not posting an agenda, correct?
There will be an agenda posted, but I believe it will state, no votes will be taken. Basically, it'll be a discussion item?
Yeah, we can put it on there as discussion only, I guess. What do you think, Grant?
You could make a motion to table discussion to that public hearing, should there be a quorum, and if not, to the regular meeting, you know, for a decision, the regular meeting in October. However you want, you can be specific as you want, but if you just say open and table, it'll be to the next special meeting, you know, the next meeting of the council.
So, if I make my motion now to table it, it'll automatically roll up to the special meeting on September 11th?
Well, do we, do we want to discuss it? I mean, do we want to discuss it at all while we're here? Well, I mean, I don't know how many people who have any, that are, have any interest in discussing it, but...
You're not gonna be here on Wednesday.
But I've got that softball deal on Wednesday, so...
I mean, do any of those proposals seem just deal breakers?
Now, we have several items going to I1. Do we have any I1-defined areas within the city?
So, we don't have any parcels that are currently zoned to I1. I don't know why that is, but we do have cascading zoning. And so, anything in, if you can do, if you're in I2 or I3, you can do anything below, which includes I1. And we have a lot of I2-zoned parcels, so...
And the businesses that may be in what will be the wrong zones, will they be grandfathered in?
Yeah, they'd be in non-conforming use until a significant change occurs, or they no longer operate for a certain period of time.
I mean, Bree and I had lunch, and we've discussed, you know, and we've discussed some of this, I've discussed some with, you know, with Clint, and with our attorney Grant, and, I mean, I, I, I mean, I think really the, you know, the only thing to me is, you know, there's so many different terminologies between tourist court, I don't even, tourist home, bed and breakfast. Really, the only one that had any question for me was, you know, bed and breakfast from R3 to R2, which really, I don't think, I don't think matters, I mean, all the...
Essentially, the difference between tourist court and bed and breakfast is, the only thing that is different in the code is a bed and breakfast serves breakfast. And so...
But it doesn't define what breakfast is?
Sure.
If it's a donuts, or a nature bar, or a...
Little Debbie snack cake.
Sure. It doesn't define what breakfast is, it just says, "It serves breakfast."
And I think, and I think what Bree and I, just in our discussion, the thing that we, you know, really kept hitting our head up against the law with all of these, is I feel like it's important for us to have everything classified as close as we can. I mean, as, as far as, you know, this is, you know, what it's, what its use is, get it classified as close, because the, and you know this, just being in charge of code enforcement, how do we, how do we enforce the code on any bed and breakfast, tourist court, tourist home? How do we, I mean, do we do, I guess we could surf through the VRBOs or the Airbnbs to determine whether or not that address shows up, I mean, if you want to have, I mean, but I don't see what the, you know, I feel like I'm more of the opinion that the, you know, we should make these, not make, but we should mandate these businesses, if you're gonna be a tourist court, or a tourist home, or a bed and breakfast, to purchase a, any business, occupancy, $25 occupational license, put it on your front door, that, you know, that at least notifies your neighbors, what, you know, that there is some, you know, something going on there, and then make sure that they participate in the, I say make sure, I don't even know if that's legal, an illegal term, but it seems like they should have to pay the hotel motel lodging tax, should, I mean, should they not?
That'll be, that'll be up to you guys, but we would have to amend the code.
Or is there something, because it's not a hotel or motel?
Correct. It's a certain amount of rooms. That, that has to go to the county vote.
Yeah. We definitely have to amend that.
Sorry on that.
So, you know, I mean, that's just my basis, and, you know, as far as the, you know, the process of the road dispensary stuff, I think, I think all that's fine.
You know, my recommendation would be to license them, and then they self-police, and then we have a database of those that are registered, and then when concerned citizens wonder if said business is registered and paying their license, or paying their hotel motel tax, or whatever, we have, we have a start, instead of trying to police the whole system.
Because mine...
And that's where the license comes from, with the $25 occupational license. We're not making a killing off that, that six grand a year off the occupation license, it's just providing us a list of businesses, so we can keep track of what's in and what's out in our municipality. It's, it's not a moneymaker for us, the $25 license. It's just information, and that's what we, we ask for voluntary compliance, self-policing, and that's what I kind of envision with this. The difference between tourist home and tourist court, tourist home has a permanent resident, somebody lives in that house. And so, they either have a mother-in-law suite on the alley, or they leave for the weekend and rent it out, you know, or they have a guest house, or spare bedroom, or something along that lines, but there's a permanent resident at that house. Tourist court is a temporary sleeping facility that does not have a permanent res, resident, and does not serve breakfast. And that's the only difference between a, a bed and breakfast, so...
Which, I mean, and you say that, Clint, but it seems to me that most, maybe, I mean, I guess I'm wrong, I'm just thinking of the bed and breakfast that I'm aware of have some commercial signage up front, whether it's like the blue house, or the Gießler house, or whatever.
And that's, that's not prohibited in a residential, we have at-home occupations. And you see a psychiatrist, or something along those lines, in home daycares, that they have, there's a sign regulation that limits the amount of square footage that they can have. And so, I can see something along those lines as well.
And this, I mean, in, in other communities, I'm sure you've researched it more than I have, Clint, in other communities, this is, I mean, is similar with both the, you know, with the marijuana, and the, and how they're addressing this, is parallels what other communities do, as far as their zoning and...
Yeah, I mean, the way ours, there's so much ambiguity in ours, that we have to do something to it, and that's, that's why we're here. Because you can see right there that we have a defined term of greenhouse and nursery in our code, and it allows it in C1. Okay? And so, that's why we have, currently have, a commercial grower located in C1. And that's what we're trying to fix. And so, the proposal is to move commercial grower and greenhouse and nursery operations, both to, to I1. That, that's the proposal. You guys see something different, let us know, and we'll switch the proposal. Where I say not defined, that's not defined currently, but you were provided in that packet definitions of those three that aren't defined.
But we aren't, we aren't taking any action, I mean, that's the best, that's the best-case scenario right now, is just... Okay. Well, that's, there's, that's where I stand on Wednesday, if I'm...
There's a, I would again...
I'm okay with, I'm okay with the proposal.
I would again, before Wednesday, look at some of those other highlights. There, there are other ones that are challenging for code enforcement. It's the automobile repair stations. We've tried to take a one-size-fits-all approach to that, and it's not working for us. We, there's different sizes of those kind of operations, and we not, we might need to separate those out, and choose different districts for different levels of operation, so...
I have a question.
Yes.
So, in the master plan, we're talking about land use, and part of land use is zoning. So, how does this, does this code here line up with that land use and zoning?
I mean, does it, they don't give us a, "Here, go change this to that, and this to that."
Right.
They just tell us to go change it, because it isn't, it's broke, and it's not working. And taking these small bites is gonna be a lot easier than a wholesale change. I don't know how many committees that we've formed to do a codebook review, and I don't think anybody's ever shown up for the first meeting of that committee. And so, I think, you know, between Grant and I, and my staff, you know, when we see an issue like we did with this, we jump on it, and we try to address it, and, and don't get gunshot about it, we recognize that there's problems. This code dates back long before me, and, so, the next item is another one of these situations, and so...
But I think I can answer that question, Stephen. I mean, I, you know, I think that in one of the, one of the parts of the comp plan, you know, it does say that, you know, they, they are leaning towards, you know, you need to embrace, you need to embrace these Airbnbs and VRBOs, because it is, you know, it is a trend, and if you're, you know, if you fight, if you try to fight that process by, you know, restricting, and then, you know, you're, you're loo, you're losing, I mean, ultimately. And I think with comp plan, it's less about the tourist home, tourist court, bed and breakfast, as it would be about the I, your I1, and your C1, that we are moving around there. Because I think part of the land use and comp plan is to put, put areas together, rather than have the C, and then the tiering. We need to have, this is a commercial district, this is an industrial...
You're, you're getting way out of what we have right now.
Sure.
And you're talking about form-based zoning, where, when you're not even concerned what happens in that building, and you're more concerned of what that building looks like, and less about what's going on inside. And that is, that's the way most municipalities are moving.
The municipalities are moving toward 2009.
And I think we'll be a little bit behind the curve when it comes to that.
But going into a 2030, a 20-year vision for our city?
Yeah.
I mean, hopefully, yeah, we're already 20 years behind, but in 20 years, we'll have caught up a little bit.
I think we've got to start with getting comfortable at fixing what's wrong with our existing code right now.
I am ready to make a motion that we table this to the special meeting on September the 11th.
Excuse me, just a minute. I don't understand what's going on, if there's any comment area, or...
If you would, just one moment. I've got a motion, do we have a second?
I didn't hear the motion, sorry.
I'm sorry, my motion was that we table this item for the special meeting on September the 11th. With no vote.
So, the motion is to table to the special meeting?
I'll second that.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second now, if you would like to speak, if you would come to the microphone.
Hi. My name's Connie Stacy, and I am prepared to comment on the proposal from bed and breakfast from R2 to R3.
Okay.
Yes. Is this a time to discuss it?
This would be the time, yes.
Okay. In 2017, a bed and breakfast opened on Academy Street, actually at 314 Academy Street. And at that time, it was operating as a bed and breakfast, and it was operating as a business. And so, I spoke to Mr. Johnson at that time, in fact, a couple of times, I spoke to him about that, and he said that clearly, that was in violation of the zoning ordinances here in Talalua, and that he had sent letters to the owner of that property, letting them know that they were in violation of the zoning ordinance, and that also, he had referred it to the county attorney, and there had been no response from that as well.
Ma'am, we're not gonna talk about any specific potential non-compliance, et cetera, today, but if you want to talk about general terms of zoning codes, we can talk about.
Okay, so, so I, I don't, well, what we object to is that they are chang, that they be changing their businesses. We have, we're zoned as R2, single-family houses, and we changed it to R3, we're allowing businesses in neighborhoods, and we're allowing transients and tourists that we have no idea about the background to come in, and we, we are asking that their verbiage put, that the bed and breakfast would not operate within 300 feet of a school. And it seems to me like changing the definition of the bed and breakfast, so that it can operate in single-family neighborhoods, is clearly trying to allow that to occur, and to allow those businesses to operate in areas that are protected by the zoning laws as they are now. I don't understand how that could happen, that you can adopt a new definition to fix a problem that was allowed to begin in the first place, when it shouldn't have. We're not against bed and breakfast in any way. We are terribly excited about what bed and breakfast can do for the economy in Talalua, and especially for the development of the north end of town. That's not anything near it, but we're worried that there could be pedophiles, and abusers, and drunk people, and there are schools in the area, and children should be protected.
So, what I heard you say was 300 feet?
And it should be easy to insert that verbiage, isn't there verbiage, something about liquor stores being close to churches, or something? I mean...
State law has that type of verbiage.
Yeah, so that's, that's something that's not unusual, or, I can't think of the word, but it's not unusual to have something like that in the...
Miss Stacy, I have a quick, you said problem? You said you don't feel like we should be changing the zoning laws to fix a problem?
Yeah, because they were operating out of, against the law, they were operating against the ordinances, and so now what we're gonna do is, we're just gonna change the definition, and move them into R3, R2, so that they can operate their businesses in our neighborhoods. And that fixes the problem, right? Now, they're not in...
Yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I just, I think, you know, and I think a lot of this is new. I mean, the marijuana stuff is new, the Airbnbs and the VRBOs, I mean, of course, bed and breakfast have been around for, you know, have been around for a while, but a lot of this, I think, you know, I don't think that the zone, I don't think that our, you know, our zoning is set up necessarily, you know, it's to kind of set some guidelines as to what we operate within. However, things change, I mean, I feel like things change, you know, it's not just things that are, since this zoning book, since the code was written, that nothing's ever gonna evolve and change, and so I think that's something that we have to take into consideration too.
Well, I'd like to...
But the concern with the 300 feet is duly noted.
Okay, is that...
And we are just discussing at this particular...
So, we would come to the chamber meeting on...
On the 11th?
On the 11th.
There'll be another discussion about this.
Okay, thank you.
And that's here, right?
Yes.
And it's not at the chamber?
Okay, it's in this...
Right here, 5:30 on September 11th.
Thank you for telling me. I'd have been in the wrong place.
If there's no further discussion, could we have a roll call?
I have a quick question.
Oh, okay.
Will there be a publication of the proposed changes available to the public for that meeting? So that we can have a chance to review?
Looking to Jamie, can we put that on the website? Yes.
If you're this, as soon as we know.
And the clerk will have copies of that special meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, and normally, whenever it sort of has stuff, she's on the team, so she wants it posted to you, so, it'll be on Facebook and the website.
Thank you. Ropa?
Counselor Hires? Counselor Hires?
For September 11th. At 5:30, right?
5:30, September 11th.
Here.
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion to adopt ordinance number 1291, 2019, amending Part 3, alcoholic beverages, taxation, and regulation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Talalua. Mr. Johnson?
Another fun one, guys. Guys haven't bragged about my PowerPoint.
They're not very colorful.
Look at that. So, we all, I'm sure, are aware that October 18, the state's alcohol laws changed. So, we have some holdouts in our code that need to be addressed. One of my favorites is at ordinary room temperature now to be refrigerated. And so we need to strike that. And go. Another one is hours of operation. So, the, let me get this straight, because it's allowing somebody to sell more often, I believe. Either the retailers or the on premise.
We don't have this in our package yet, correct?
No, no, this was a, this was a Wednesday, Tuesday evening, Wednesday decision to bring this forward. We had a local business owner receive their notice that their license was expiring and they decided to come up here and talk about it. And we talked for quite a while and we looked at the Alcohol Beverage Control Act and we identified some places that we needed to change. Grant and I had discussed this back in 18 when this impending change was happening and we felt for the most part that we were on solid ground, the way our code was written and organized, that we could move through the change without a panic and rewriting our code. One of the ones that stuck out on my, wasn't very much conversation with this business owner, is this retail beer and wine only. So that's your convenience stores, grocery stores that are selling wine and beer now. We've been charging them 900, which we feel like we can stand on because the state, we can't charge more than the state. But a retail wine license is $1,000. If you wanna sell wine, you gotta pay $1,000. Otherwise, you can go with the state and sell only beer for $500. The way our code is structured, we don't have those options. The ones above the yellow are the only options that we had in October 2018 when the state law changed. So, what I'm proposing is to add these two additions, the retail beer and wine only for 450. I'll remind you that if you wanted to do retail beer and wine, you're looking at 1,500. So then the on premise beer and wine only is 450. Both of those, we're having to buy the retail packaged store for 900 or the mixed beverage license for 900. And so if you're not going to have spirits, liquor, rum, vodka, that kind of a thing, then you have this cheaper option for both the retailers and the on premise.
But they still have to pay the state?
They still do the state and they have to bring their state license to us before we'll give them their license.
Basically paying, paying two grand to.
Yeah. And then the other big change is revoking the whole chapter, chapter two, which is non intoxicating beverages. That was what addressed the 32. And now we no longer have 32, so we need to revoke that from our code. That's the changes that I'm proposing. Refrigeration, hours of operation, days that alcohol can be sold, and then two new categories of occupation licenses.
Go back to the string about the hours of operation. So we're expanding that?
Yeah, we're striking out everything that we had. And then we're adding that from, that's pretty much verbatim from the state, from the Alcohol Beverage Control Act.
Okay, so we're lining up what the state.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
If you're gonna strike that, I think that sentence doesn't make any sense now. Because now it says no retail packaged store should be open.
No, that should be struck, stricken.
Purpose of selling any alcoholic beverages at any hour, polls are open whether on a national, state, county, or election, city election.
Yeah, now you can sell alcohol during elections.
So you're saying that entire paragraph?
That whole thing should be stricken.
Is this even actionable tonight?
No, it's discussionable.
No, discussionable.
Okay. Yeah, I would love to have this separate format so we can read it in the process later, because you know how much I love to read.
So this is, so you're gonna have to make, we're gonna have to back this up from my mind, because I'm more visual and I'm visual with my hands. So what you're really saying is right now, like Walmart, who's only selling beer and wine, they would have to pay the $900.
Today, yes.
But what this is doing would be carving that out to say, because they don't sell whiskey and vodka.
Correct.
They only smell the beer and wine, that they would only have to pay 450?
Correct.
Why?
Well, like I said, we, we can't be, our license fee can't be more than that at the state.
Right, but if the state's 1,500, our license fee would be 900.
We could structure it like this.
I mean, it sounds, the state is 1,500.
I'm being business friendly here with my proposal.
Look, we also need to be revenue generating friendly, revenues are awesome.
Again, it's like the occupation licenses. We're not gonna get rich off the $25,000 of this generated this past year when everybody was being charged 900.
Right.
And my phone has blown up ever since they've been charged 900, because a lot of these people went from $20, they went from 20 to 900 in one year with the state law change. And I guess this is kind of a compromise. And if you guys wanna go that, 1,500, you can. Yeah, this is just what I'm proposing.
Retail, so they have to pick that up and take it away.
Retail's off premise, correct.
A bar would still have a different classification.
If they serve just beer and wine and no spirits, it's 450 for them as well.
On our proposed. Whereas right now, they would have to serve, they would.
They would have to obtain a mixed beverage license and then they could sell spirits if they got their state license.
Have we looked at any of our universe communities to see what they're charging for this?
Yeah, um, Glenpool, um, they're doing 500 because of this initial license. It says it, somewhere around there, it says the initial license is 500. That's the on premise, that's number 14, on premise beer and wine, 500 initial, 450 after that. And so they went with 500 and they went with 500 on both. So, if you're thinking about Glenpool, you might come to Talalcoa instead.
Any other questions, councilors?
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be, you said you're being business friendly. I don't wanna be unfriendly to business, but it seems like we're making a distinction that doesn't really need to be made. I mean.
I mean.
We're stepping in.
Does.
Really for larger retailers, I mean, larger retailers who aren't.
Like I said, this is just my proposal. If you wanna go $1,000 for a retail wine license and 500 for a retail beer license, I think we're, we're good with the Alcohol Beverage Control Act. As far as I can tell, we'll, Grant and I will look at it again.
I don't think we go, we have to go to 1,500. But I think we don't have to break a fee schedule that we already have in place. I don't think he's saying the 900 is in excess. The 900 currently is in excess from the, depending on how you look at it.
Yep, the retail beer. We felt like we could stand on it and defend it when we talked about it, us being at 900 and the 1,000 and the 500 thing, but.
So if you, so if you serve beer, I mean, I don't know, for example, Croner and Bear, if they sell beer and they do have some wine, then they're paying 1,500 to the state up to us.
No, they're on premise. So their first year it was 500 and then every year after that it's 450.
Up to the state, whereas we're charging 900 to them.
Correct. Yeah, so back up to that.
It's just the same thing, it's just the same.
Well, that makes more sense to me, I mean, now I kind of understand why.
The law's changed and we haven't yet.
I didn't understand why it was folding out. We have one on premise and one retail and we're trying to package them the same with beer and wine.
Okay.
Do we have to make a motion to end this discussion or?
No.
Nope.
How does it, since it's not.
No, if there are no other comments or questions, we can move on.
We just stop talking. It should just be quiet.
We can pass that one.
I'll sit on my hands and then the discussion will end.
Item number nine, discussion possible action to approve the utilization of Anthus Brennan's Sports Complex by certain tournament providers, schedule grand opening of Anthus Brennan's Sports Complex softball fields and/or approve an Anthus Brennan's Sports Complex reservations and operation policy. Counselor Ratliff?
As some of you might know, I've been trying to get things ramped up out there, so Caleb's here, Caleb's kind of helped me put together, you know, him and I have been in some conversations about, you know, how do we, you know, if we wanna host a tournament, where do we start? Okay, well, much like Norris Park and the skate park now and some of the other facilities, we don't really have, don't really have a fee schedule in place. And so I had Caleb, Caleb put together the numbers on this and, you know, and he sent it to me and I reviewed it and in the process we, I compiled some others from some other communities, both in the state, outside of the state, which were, you know, really honestly quite a bit high, like the Arkansas stuff. But I guess the main, the main thing that's, you know, for us really is we have to have, per grants, you know, what he's telling me is just like if you wanna rent out Norris Park, you know, you gotta reserve it, you gotta make a deposit and then that gives you kind of exclusivity for whatever, rent of the gazebo or the pavilion or the park itself. And so I feel like we kind of need to have that same thing in place for, if somebody wants to come in and host a tournament, that they are, you know, those are their fields, they paid for those fields, those fields are theirs, somebody else can't come and play a pickup game or kickball or whatever else. And so that gives them, you know, gives them, what's exclusivity, I guess, for the, for the timing that they're in it, right? So, so I think one that, you know, and these numbers necessarily, we don't necessarily have to go with these numbers, but I feel like this is something that we should review and tweak and make sure that we have, we have in place. The second, the second piece to that is on the 26th, 27th, 28th of September, one of the first conversations that I had with people in the community was with our athletic director at Talalcoa High School, Matt Cloud. And so I, you know, I, he, he reached out to me and he said, hey, let's do a tournament and let's do them on your, let's do them on your, on your fields. What do you feel about that? So that'd be great, we can have, you know, we really need to get, we really need to get that thing off the ground. We gotta let the community know that this is available, that softball, you know, softball fields are ready to go and Charles and his guys have been working it off out there to make that happen. So this, this motion, you know, this motion is, you know, is, you know, kind of complex as far as what needs to, you know, what needs to take place. But I wanna open it up for discussion with you guys on what you think about, you know, my conversation with Matt Cloud and with Clay Davis and those guys at Northeastern. This is a high school tournament, right, so there's 24 teams from across the state. They, they wanna grow this thing, they think that, you know, there should probably be somewhere in the neighborhood of 40, you know, 40 teams coming here to play. This isn't, you know, this isn't per se, you know, specific for our group of kids that we've kind of been working for, these, you know, 12, 13, 14, you know, eight year old kids, softball players. This is, you know, this is high school, these are high school girls that will be coming to play softball. So I wanna try to figure out, I wanna try to figure out, just in conversation with you guys, what, what we can do, you know, what we can do as a city to kind of say, you know, hey, the fields are open, you know, we've got a tournament going on. I don't know what's gonna draw those, you know, those, you know, those adolescent kids out to say, hey, you know, these fields look great and look at these, you know, look at these high school kids and, you know, look at the fields. And so I, whatever, you know, whatever you guys think as far as, you know, I, I would like to, I would like to let them, you know, utilize the field for free, especially during this initial kickoff, since we don't really have the rate schedule set up in place. If, you know, if we are for a dollar or whatever legally we have to do. And then piggyback off of that with, I talked to Officer Smith, Nate hasn't told you this, but Officer Smith says that he's got a smoker or a grill or, you know, so I don't know about flipping some burgers and, you know, getting maybe a bouncy house or, you know, I don't know, I don't know what the draw would be, you know, to get kids there, but what do you, what do you guys think?
You had my kid at Bouncy House.
And this is, you know, really the tournament's gonna take place during the day, so Thursday day. Kids will be in school Friday, Friday day, a lot of that'll be today and then Saturday kind of is the, you know, is those teams weed themselves out. There will be, you know, Saturday day, we'll see, you know, we'll see some more of that activity where people actually might not be in school and their parents can load them up in the car and bring them out. So I would think if we were gonna do anything, it would be probably Saturday day sometime, so that'd be the 20, September the 28th.
Has rented the concession and all that?
Yeah, they're gonna do the concessions, they're gonna do, they're gonna do the dirt work, they're gonna paint the fields, they're gonna put out the, you know, I think, they gotta, just, you guys got the pegs in for the, you know, for the plates. So, you know, really, there's not a lot that, you know, the city necessarily has to do other than, you know, make sure that the bathrooms are unlocked and toss some toilet paper in there.
Now, clarifying, is this what we're considering to be the city's kickoff to the usage of this field? And so we would be providing the use of the field specifically for this particular welcome to play event? Or is this their tournament?
Right, the welcome to play, the welcome to play thing, the welcome to play thing, that's what I'm saying is because there really is no volleyball presence and for softball, for our Cherokee County softball league, there isn't, there, it doesn't exist. And it doesn't exist for a number of reasons, but, so this, you know, this agreement, this, you know, this thing that I'm working on is really just to kind of say, hey, let's, let's give the, let's call it like a soft opening, you know? I mean, I guess we call it like, you know, when you go to Nukes and you got the special card and you show up and everybody ate for free, that kind of thing. I mean, that's, that's kind of my, that's kind of my concept, except that Talalcoa High School, probably there, they'll be making money off the concessions, they'll be selling pop and candy bars and whatever and then, you know, if we wanna have a presence there to flip some burgers and hot dogs and whether we sell those or give them away, you know, that was, does that, does that answer your question?
Yes, just did.
So soft, soft open. And so, I mean, with that, with that said, I don't, you know, I wanted, I wanted everybody to kind of get a copy of this 'cause, you know, Caleb's worked on it a little bit, we've been working on it, Grant and I, you know, emailed back and forth to each other. I did compare it to Cherokee Nation's, you know, and Cherokee Nation, their day use field is 20. You know, so I think for a small, you know, so I think really a lot of these rates should almost be cut in half. Mostly just because if somebody says, well, you know, wanna host a tournament at Talalcoa, you know, we got two options. Do we wanna go, we'll go to, you know, here on our, on our fields or do we wanna go, we'll go up to Cherokee Nation? And so, you know, I really would propose that these numbers get cut in half. I think that we're all aware that the, much like the use of our, you know, of our skate, you know, the skate agreement that we have, the intent is not to, the intent is to encourage, the intent is to encourage tournament play. The intent is really to, to capture some of that natural or that organic sales tax collection that's gonna take place when 40 teams or 20 teams or 15 teams show up and, you know, go eat at Salmonella's or go, you know, go stay in a hotel. I mean, I think those are the benefits to this community, not necessarily, you know, fighting over $25, you know, to play here or to play over there. So I think, you know, my proposal would be, you know, we cut these numbers in half.
Are you wanting us to take action on this tonight or are you just wanting us to think about it?
I just, and that was my question, is I just don't know if, you know, I'm not necessarily, we don't necessarily have to take action on this, on the rate schedule. I think, you know, is what I'd like, some clarification to say to Matt Cloud and then I've got a guy that wants to host a tournament, wants to host a tournament the following weekend, right? Wants to have one on the October the 6th, I think, you know? And so we can pass this, we can pass this schedule in our mid-month or we can do it, you know, at the beginning of next month. So we don't necessarily, that's not the pressing issue, the pressing issue is I don't wanna, I don't wanna say to Matt Cloud, yes, you can use our fields, go for it, you know, I'll get a key without bringing it before this board or before this body to say, yeah, Trey, we're in agreements with that, you know? And so I guess that would be my question is, do we wanna use, you know, do we wanna use, you know, this is our soft opening and give them permission to, to utilize, to utilize the fields at, at no charge in hopes that, you know, next year, year two of this tournament. of this tournament, three of the tournament, fourth tournament, that's just this particular tournament, that's not, you know, that doesn't count all the youth stuff. And so, you know, I would imagine by early October, we would have a rate schedule in place, so.
I think legally, we've kind of chased that before as far as the freeze at length when we've dealt with the farmer's market and then again with the
Skate park.
The skate park issue. So, I mean, and Grant's kind of giving his opinion on that. So, and, and I hate to be a dead horse, but I'm always over here screaming universes. Have we looked at the other communities, our comparable communities, see what they do?
Yeah, not necessarily our comparables. I've, I've had conversations with, Edmund sent me some information, I got the information that's sent to, it was Skytook in Miami and someplace in southwest Missouri and kind of how they, you know, how their day usage and tournament fee rates are set up. And then in conjunction with that is, you know, is also, there's, so there's two different pieces. You've got, you've got your tournament, you've got your tournament, what do you call it, schedule, I guess, and then you've got, and then you've got your league play, right? So you've got, you know, this is your, like how we currently do, we charge $7 per team, is that right? You know, $7 per, you know, per individual that signs up to play soccer or baseball or whatever, you know, so we collect that as a city currently.
I think with this, our universe isn't necessarily other towns. I think our universe is Cherokee Nation and softball fields that they have, that are connected to our town. And I think that we have to be in line with them.
Very small universe.
Right, regardless of what the town does.
Well, the quality of the fields that we have, I mean, these new fields are great. You know, it doesn't compare, this is not the same issue as, as the farmer's market. What this is, we want as a city, say, come check out our facilities, we're going to let you have this big tournament here, bring them in and let's do it. So what, what fees do you want, do you think need to be cut in half? Let's iron it out.
Right, well, I think, I mean, I just think instead of renting a field for $50 a day, I think it should be $25 a day, you know, per field, and that's for soccer and, you know, for soccer and softball.
What about the concession and the entire facility, are those in line or?
I'd say just cut it all basically in half, you know, after looking at it, it's like, you know, I mean, if you're going to, if it's going to be a busy day and you don't want to have to sell 300 candy bars to pay to use the, you know, to pay to use the concession, you know, I mean, so I think that's, you know.
Our other motion would be to divide this into a couple of pieces, deal with the soft opening and authorization of the use of the field for that, and revisit with a revised rate schedule and reservation procedure at our next meeting.
My only issue with the rates is I'm fine with the 50, I mean, I truly would be fine with the 25, but I think that it should stay in line with Phoenix Park and what we're doing at Phoenix Park, and then it also should stay in line with what we did at the skate park. And I tried to find online what we ended up doing with the skate park and I couldn't find it online. So Jamie, we might need to have to work on getting the skate reservations out there. But I couldn't remember if we did $50, I, I know that we begged and pleaded and got it down to $50, but I couldn't remember if it was $50 for six hours or it was $50 all day.
So here's, so here's the deal, I mean, this is, you know, and this is what I, just for example, this tournament that's going to run Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right? If you're talking about $50 a field, right, $50 a field, and say they only use two fields, you know, so if they're spending 200, they're spending $100 per field, you know, for, you know, for two days, you know, times two, so that's $400 plus another five or $600 for the, you know, to rent the concessions, you know, concessions, you know, so, and that's, and they, they will provide, I mean, they'll provide all, they'll do all the dirt work and, you know, that, where they don't, that's also scheduled, they don't like to use that. So I think that we really don't want to get into, we don't want to, whereas with the skate park or with Norris Park, it's kind of really just, it's usually not a multi-day, two or three days, you know, three-day tournament, you know, if it's, that's, that's 150 bucks, you know, 150 bucks for one field. You know, so I think that's not necessarily the case when you're talking about Norris Park or the skate park. Usually it's a one-day event or as opposed to a three-day tournament.
So going back to the softer, I believe, I just had a conversation about we could be for a soft opening because that would be our city event soft opening. And then we could come back in and address what we're going to do for all of the rest of the future ones and.
Right, and you're not even waiving a fee because there is no fee established, you're just allowing them to be there, you know, and not charge a mission.
Correct, using the field for our soft opening.
Right, perfect. And with, is there, do we, as a, as a city, do we want to, I mean, I don't know how that works, do we have an interest in getting a bouncy house or cooking hot dogs or do we just, I mean, do we put up a sign or, you know, I don't know, shoot off fireworks or whatever?
We should have your.
That's $50.
Jeffy, it's been a long day.
So I mean, yeah, clearly I can, I agree, so I can, we can, you know, we can keep this and we can revise it. I, you know, just recently got a copy of the Cherokee Nation deal back and then I saw it was 25 bucks after I'd already submitted this stuff again. So I think we can definitely work on the rate schedule if you guys are okay with it and then utilize the field.
If we can work on the rate schedule and you think you have a tournament lined up for the following week that might pay for the bounce house, we might be able to come to a deal.
All right, so yeah, I mean, I don't think, we don't need to have a motion or anything on this, do we, I mean?
I'm going to interject an unrelated statement I brought up before, I think when we were evaluating the lease terms for our other properties when Jamie was still working for us, is just as a city, and I'm not sure who needs to own this, but we really need to brand ourselves and like every document such as the one that we're looking at right now, reservation policy, I really think we need to work on branding us where every document you look at is a clear city of Talikwa, this is us, this is our logo, this is, this is who we are. And we just need to be consistent because we have a tendency of, I don't know that I've seen two documents look like.
Right, with that, you know, I sent this to.
And I'm absolutely not being negative towards you.
Right, when I sent, when I sent this to Grant, I mean, when I got it back, right, my rough draft and, you know, Caleb and I's rough drafted, you know, version, I mean, it came back looking very similar to the way that, you know, the Norris Park, you know, the Norris Park agreement looks. So I agree, I agree with that, I mean.
And I'm not trying to trash you at all.
This wasn't on the logo on it, so.
This is something I mentioned some time ago and.
And with that, another unrelated point, but still within, you know, the same realm is there is potentially a skate thing coming early October. So, you know, where somebody, so just so you guys are aware that that may be, you know, that may be happening too.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Do we need to take action about the soft opening?
If you want to go ahead and take a vote as to the allowance of this group on these days to utilize those fields, that's perfectly permissible if you'd want to do that, to clarify it, so there's no dispute.
Do you want to bust that motion out, Trey, so that you know the date?
All right, I make a motion to allow for a soft opening event at the Anthus Brennan Softball Fields on September 26th, 27th, 28th with Talikwa High School and Northeastern State University and the city of Talikwa.
There's a motion to second, any discussion? If not, if we could have a roll talk.
Mike, give her a second, she did a lot of writing over there.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Anybody else need a break?
Yes.
Okay, five minute break.
I got to go to sleep.
Calling us back in the order at 8:45. Item number 10, discussion possible action in regard to grade adjustment to the chief's executive assistant within police department.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. I submitted support, supporting documentation with this along with my spiel memo, if you would. Back before the salary analysis, I came to council, the chief secretary at the time changed that job description to an executive assistant and bumped three grades. At that point in time, that position was a grade two, which was actually below the secretary that was supervised by that position. So changed that to a grade five. Somehow in the salary analysis, got bumped down to a T-113, which would be in the equivalent of a grade, grade three from our old salary layout. And so here tonight to ask to remedy that, to fix that, I believe what happened, you know, there's HR director, it was not here during the salary analysis, I really feel like old documents were given to the company and so basically she was at a certain level in the old document, she was just put back at that level in, when the salary analysis was completed. And so asking to reclassify that, one, as an executive assistant, not a secretary, and two, to change that grade instead. While we're talking primarily about a position tonight, we're also talking about a person. A person that occupies that position's been with the city for more than 20 years, is probably, is the most tenured employee when it comes to Casell, when it comes to Novatime and the working knowledge of that. Some of our struggles as of late have been from that, losing that experience, that not, that working knowledge in large quantities and having to replace it. This is something I'm coming today to ask for. I know there are comparable positions or positions similar that are a T-114. We'd like to point out though, that the police department is the largest department in the city with the most complex scheduling in the city. It's not, we, we don't have 50 employees that work eight to four, that it's kind of easy to reconcile their time. We have, we have three different shifts, actually four if you count administrative shifts, and then we also have a job that we can't just lay down the weed eater and come back the next day and pick up weed eating where we stopped at four o'clock the day before. There are calls that we stay late, come in early, have the largest individual department budget in the, in the city, and this position is leaned on heavily for both timekeeping, budget management, the requisitions especially in that, in that sense. And so I'm asking tonight to put that position to a T-115 step eight, which would be a bump in salary of about a little over $5,000. I could find that money within my budget, so it won't cost the general fund any extra. I will find that money in my budget. We actually have a position open right now that will make up that difference in the end by the time we fill it. We'll get it far enough ahead in our budget. Like to feel any questions, if you have any comments, concerns, just something that's needed to be done. Finally was able to get with the city clerk to find the old council agenda, to find that supporting documentation where she had been moved, where that position had been adjusted prior to the salary analysis. So here tonight to ask for that.
Sorry, thank you for giving us all the information so we could read before the meeting tonight, I appreciate that. And with all that being said, I will happily make a motion as presented by Chief King.
I'll say it.
Will that be effective?
Will that be effective, Chief King?
Next pay period, that way it's easier on, on finance and HR, so there's no proration.
So when does, do I need to state when that pay period starts?
Be the, the 11th of September would be the next pay period start.
So I will modify my motion to go with that next pay period, next pay period.
Are you willing to modify your second?
Yes.
Okay, is there further discussion?
I just have one question, so how does this work from the HR standpoint? So do we need to?
And this is the only thing, and Dave and I have actually talked about this today, so I did want to bring some things because it has been a little bit of research and there was an item that was missing from the packet, so I thought this might be helpful for you guys because it will kind of show you who else is in a T-114, who's in a T-115, who's in that classification as a T-113, well, so on and so forth.
A bunch of people that haven't been here for 20 years.
So it, it is kind of interesting when I look at that list. So on top of that, I also brought with me a copy of the salary analysis that was done. I've never seen the whole thing, I would love to see it, maybe I need to go dig it in some offices and find it. But I did have, and I'll give one to you, I'm sorry, Randy, I'll get, get you the other copy. But this is, this, obviously the salary analysis, so I wanted to make sure that you guys had a copy of that so that you can kind of see, just, you know, this was on here at that time, so I, I get that and I certainly get the points and understand the concerns and the changes that were, would have been done and could have gotten misconstrued at the time that they did that. But I also went back and looked at the job descriptions, the old job descriptions that were on the, on the drive, on the HR computer that showed the different jobs, tried to figure out the methodology that they used. Because again, I do not have that report, but, you know, I was able to find out that the administrative assistant, who was the administrative assistant to the mayor and to the city administrator, was classified as a grade five, so it was the same grade that she was at, but it ended up in a T-114, not that T-115. Finance support officer was another position, that was a grade five, and so those were the only things that I think from a consistent standpoint, you know, keeping it in the range of a, of a T-114, I think is more consistent with what has happened. Computer support specialist or IT guys, they're classified as T-114s and such, so that's the only thing I would add.
Can you tell me, do we have anyone else in the city who is writing for grants and managing grants or is that specifically only in this one position?
I do not know all of the extensive duties that Sam does, so I did not realize she was writing grants.
I think that's the deal for me, she's been with this so long, she brings huge capacity to us, she's kind of topped out where she's at, we absolutely don't want to lose her, it would be detrimental to your department to lose her.
Extremely detrimental, yes. And, and I understand the T-114 argument. And when, when I talked, I said, I understand your point, but also know that based on the work she does, based on what that position's evolved in, I mean, you know, we've grown by eight employees alone since I've been chief, we're over 50 employees, that's 50 time cards that she's double checking each or twice a month, each week, basically. The budget, the grants, just, there's a lot on that position. It has really turned into an executive assistant, administrative assistant position in the largest department in the city.
And if she were to leave us and got to be somebody shiny new off the street, who would start out as a step one, that salary would be significantly low.
Yes.
Maybe she had time to write grants for the city as a whole? I, I'm sure she could be talked to about it.
For a T-115 step eight.
So I don't have a problem with bringing the position to the T-115, if that's where.
Yeah, and I don't either. I mean, ultimately, that decision is you guys' is, I just wanted to be able to give you the information because I think it's valid to look at, to try to figure out the methodology of what was going on before.
Sure.
This has come before this body, you know, may have been different faces that were setting on this body, but the salary analysis, the budget sheets where it was classified as a one, I mean, I get that, there's been a mistake, I think it really should probably be in the T-114. I think that's consistent, I understand her longevity with the company, I mean, with the city for 20 years, I mean, that's going to put her up there in steps.
Right.
But.
Because my problem, so my, I guess my whole question then would hinge around, how do we, rather than just taking this job and saying, now we're going to make it a T-115, should we, do we need to go through the steps of changing the job description, changing what, how this job looks? Because there's probably a lot within her job that's not in the job description, but then would make it a.
I think I'll provide both job descriptions.
You did, and I found another one, Nate, this is one that I have a feeling may have come in, may have come from the Johansson group, which was the group that did the salary analysis.
You're rolling your eyes.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So I'm looking at the format and to me, there's a lot of similarities as far as the way these things are broken down. So I think that might have come where that, where that came from. So that's another one for your group, and it still always had that, you know, executive secretary, and I have no problem changing that title, updating the job description if it needs to include the, you know, the, I mean, it has right monthly reimbursements for grant money, manage the grants, write grants for the department, I mean, those were the, the top three thing.
Anyone there that is a stepping group?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyone on there that did a stepping group recommendation?
No, huh? No, I just searched for it.
Because really, in like my world where, in just hearing you describe the job that she does, you're not, we're not really looking at like. she does, you're not, we're not really looking at like an executive assistant, we're more looking at like an operations manager within the department. Because they're the person that does kind of the backend of everything.
The backend of everything.
Writing the grants, getting the people paid, getting all of the, you know, probably helps with a lot of the...
So that's like pretty fast for her, I can tell you that, I know, within every two weeks.
Getting the finance stuff turned in, so it's people paying.
It's harder work.
So in like my world, where I work, that's that position what it would be, which then would go back up to more of that T-115 level.
Yeah.
And so...
I just think there's a little bit of exposure.
Is that HR people here?
No, but it's a little bit of exposure. If you like, and look at some of the other administrative type secretary duties. And I will use the street department. So that classification, that is one of our lowest classifications. And I know, and I'm just going, you know, throw her name out there, everybody knows Vicki Johnson, she's been here forever. I know that she's been with the city for 19 years, so a pretty long time. And when I look at the duties she does, and maybe I'm wrong, again, because I don't deal with everything, I don't know every day-to-day activity that either one of these employees, you know, provide to the city. I know with a lot of street projects, there's a lot of bomb things, there's a lot of things that she keeps up with as well that are equally as important, I do believe, and so there could be the argument. And I know, you know, we talked, well, then Wayne needs to come in, or someone needs to come in and fight with that person, and I get that. But you own that, and you set that precedent. So our next, you know, and I get that completely, but...
And when I, for the two of you that were here, I think Stephen and Bree were both councilmen, Bree may not have been. When I came, when I came and reclassified her the first time, it was, it was the same argument. It was Commissioner Corn at the time wanting to, and I made the argument, I'm not, I'm not arguing for street, I'm arguing for this position within the police department.
And neither am I, but I'm just putting the example for the president.
And I carried it through the first time. And I under, because I understand, I think, the level that we're really talking.
The level of responsibility on a position.
I think what makes it, and I think in HR, you have a lot of this issue, is you have a job description that's titled in such a way that it gives you a perceived notion of what that job is. And I think in this instance, because it is an executive assist, because it is an executive assistant, you know, we have a notion that it's doing, you know, answering the phone, doing that.
Right now, it's bumped down to actually to a secretary.
Really what that position is doing is what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
And so my problem is not with bringing it to a T-115. My problem is, my, I guess my only asterisk to that would be, is maybe we have, we need to look at the job description and writing, rewriting the job description and writing it to that level, making sure that we, you know...
Title the job.
Right, we have a job that fits the T-115 description, not just in what we know she's doing, but actually on paper, this is what it all comes down to. Does that make sense?
Absolutely. We just redid that in my organization to clearly delineate the food chain, so you've got assistants, coordinators, managers, and directors. That way, when you hear somebody's title, you know where they're at in the food chain and, and what their scope is. And I think obviously her, she has a great scope, and she's a very valuable asset to your department.
Correct.
And so we just need to, I think it's a great suggestion, we could, we could repackage what her true duties are. But I absolutely agree regardless of if we call her Superman, Superwoman, we need to make her a T-115, step eight.
And I can work with Ms. Page now.
Oh, absolutely.
Get in the job.
I mean, you've got three there, so...
Is she okay with Superwoman? Is that a good title?
I'm sure she would take Superwoman, yes.
Did you guys have any other questions for me?
During the, do we want to take action on the...
I thought we already had a motion in a second.
That's what you need to do, word that, like, like a change on your, you guys, job description?
Um, I think Nate could probably bring that to us.
I can bring that up later.
Later.
Can you?
Quickly.
We have the motion in a second. We have roll call, please. Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Long?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm up again.
Item number 11, discussion possible action in regard to creating a cost reimbursement account for the FBI Safe Trails, amount of $12,000. Chief King?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Again, this is an ongoing, we presently have an account within Casell for this purpose, but it's running at a negative balance, and it's an account that's about two years old now. We have two officers assigned to the FBI Safe Trails Working Group, which is an Indian country task force, basically, that these two officers are working, basically as FBI agents in our area and when needed in other areas. That comes with paid overtime by the FBI, but it's a reimbursement overtime. So basically, this is just a cash loan, so officers can get paid in that pay period, and then will be reimbursed by the federal government afterwards. Right now, they're under 45 days as far as reimbursement goes, once we submit a claim. Right now, we're receiving reimbursements within 45 days. But once again, our account in Casell's running negative, so I thought it'd be a good idea to come back in and ask for a new account to start for this year, basically.
So do we have a new agreement?
This agreement is ongoing. It's still in effect from when it was signed. This is the memorandum of understanding that's still in effect for that working group.
So even though it's dated?
I think it was a two-year agreement, if I, if memory serves.
So we are asking just for a different account in Casell, which is...
Correct, and to fund it with the $12,000 in her department, though, or I wouldn't imagine, I guess. I mean, that's really on the finance side. I'm just asking for an account of $12,000 in, so that we know where this year's overtime money's coming from, or being paid out of.
So typically with a grant, you do create a new account each year so that you can keep your funding years separate. But it is not unusual for a grant to run into a negative because those are typically a reimbursement situation?
Correct. Correct. The problem was is that original, the original creation of that account, and this is not a grant, this is just an agreement that's paid overtime. It was never adjusted, basically, to come into it. It's a, it's a payout-only account, it doesn't have a deposit account within it, to be able to funnel the money back into it, so to speak, to keep it in deposit. It was basically just a payout account.
So are you telling me the money then that is reimbursed has gone back into the general fund and not into this account?
Correct, it's in miscellaneous.
Okay. That's sounding to me as if that's just an accounting issue?
No, it very well could be, but there's also not a sub-account within this for the receivables, per se, for that reimbursement. And however it wants to be cleaned up, we just need, we just need a little more money so that we have money available to cut the paycheck, the payroll checks.
So you're saying you're paying, you're paying, you're floating your guys, and then when the FBI cuts a check, it just goes back to the city of Talalaw, it doesn't back into your department anymore?
I'm still not sure what it is.
Right, it's a past, I mean, essentially...
So are we asking for $12,000 of budget?
Yes, to basically create an account with $12,000 budget in it.
Okay, but not $12,000 cash in it?
No, just $12,000 budget in it, yes.
Well, it has, it would have to have cash in it, because we have to pay them, we have to pay the police officer, then file the reimbursement with FBI, and then the FBI, so there has to be $12,000 that that, that we pay the police officer with. And then when we get that reimbursement from the FBI, it would go back into the general fund, it would go back to the account.
Correct.
So that account would just roll down. I mean, it'd be $12,000 at the end of the year.
Correct.
Which is probably what is happening and why it's zero, because we're still charging me that account. And no money goes into it, it's all going back to the general fund, so it's just charging down.
Correct.
But it shouldn't be, I mean, we should be creating a new account, a new accounting code for it every year if we continue doing this. But this is dated, and so I would assume that probably there was an assumption somewhere that this agreement is not, no longer in place. But I don't know, again, how that works.
So is the question, are we going to continue with this, or is the question just that we need to get the accounting straightened out?
Need to get the accounting straightened out, one way or another, and really, Counselor Hires, I believe is right, that account, the way it was set up was, isn't designed to have money deposited back into it from an outside source, once that budget's created. I mean, I'm sure the accounting steps can be made to do that, to add an account for further receivables. But yes, we just, we need some available, available budget so that payroll runs smoothly.
Manny, what do you think? Are you familiar with this piece?
I'd like to just see it, the accounting fixed. That's usually the cleanest and most visible way.
Does anyone have a motion in relation to this?
I don't, I don't really know what the motion would be. I mean, I know what the chief is asking for.
And I mimic this off of a, off of a Safe Trails, or off of an FBI, or ATF paid overtime motion from back in 2016 or so.
But does a motion need to be made to create, I mean, to create a new account in Casell for this, or not Casell, sorry?
Casell.
Casell.
In my opinion, if we've chosen to continue with this program, and the council is okay with continuing with this program, how we set up the accounting is a separate administrative function. It's not a, no question for this body.
But there's no money in it right now.
Well, but that's an administrative function.
Okay. Okay. No action needed then, I guess.
So we'll figure, so we'll figure it out administratively?
Yes.
No, you'll be back.
If you don't see it, you'll be back.
Correct. I will be.
You'll be back by and toward.
Yes.
I think we can manage that internally. Okay, so item number 12, discussion possible action in regard to funding 2018 DOJ Bulletproof Vest Grant Account 337461010 in the amount of $3,375 with matched funds from the city of Talalaw, $3,375.
And this is 2018 Bulletproof Vest Grant. There's already an account number set up, but it has zeros in it in Casell. And basically, we were awarded $3,375 by the federal government, by the Department of Justice, with the understanding that we match those funds with a total of $6,000 and so a lot of dollars to buy bulletproof vests. And once again, it's a reimbursement grant. Once we buy a vest, we pay the full price, we send in a bill to DOJ, and then they cut us a check for their portion, their half of each vest, and send it back to us. So in a way, we're fronting all the money, and then we're reimbursed half of the total grant.
And so that comes, I mean, is that within your, within your budget? I mean, that's part of something that he budgeted for, was the 67.50 or whatever?
Typically, yes, we anticipate those matching grant funds and whatnot, but this is basically to create it. The account was created way back, and I left my, no, I didn't have the emails, I'll probably have attached them, the emails where the account was created. But it was never, actually, there was never any money put in it. And then I, I attached the application details from the Department of Justice showing that we need $33.75, they're going to pay us back $33.75 for a total of $6,750. And on the very last page, it shows that the account's there, but there's no money in it presently. And we have, we're still spending money on the 2017 Bulletproof Vest Grant, but it closes this month. So in October, we'll, when we buy bulletproof vests, I think we're due to buy 10 vests this year, vests that expire. Once we start buying those, it'll have to come out in 2018 money, DOJ money.
So are you saying that we need to have an accounting unit, or we need to have an account?
Is the question, we are going to approve matching the funds on this one?
Well, the city's already basically agreed to the terms when we were awarded the grant. We had agreed to them, they're just the administrative action to put the money in there.
So we have this account, and so what you're saying, are you saying that we need to move $10,125 into it, which would be the 67.50 plus the award amount of $33.75?
No, we only need 67.50 total in there.
Okay, and then they'll reimburse us?
They will reimburse us to 33.
So we just need to move $6,750 into this accounting unit?
Correct.
The 337461010.
Okay.
Once again, can we do that?
That's right. Okay. Item number 13, discussion possible action to allow TNT crane rigging to close North Muskogee Avenue at 2010 North Muskogee for four days to perform work on the tower behind the AT&amp;T building. It's Street Commissioner Riles, Mr. Riles is not able to be with us today. Understanding is that AT&amp;T is needing to do some work on the big old clunky tower that is behind the...
They're removing it? They're taking it out?
No, they're not. They're just replacing some items that are on it. Mr. Riles said in his view, they are asking for four days, and that is too long. So he really was asking that we not proceed with the four days.
So what did he recommend?
He did not recommend...
Said four days is too long.
He said four days is too long. Yes, sir.
Why can't they just park the crane behind the building? I mean, there's a big parking lot back there.
My understanding is that they can't get to the portion of the tower that they need from the back of the building.
Is Main Street, is the base in Main Street heavy enough to carry the crane, or is it going to damage the street?
I don't know that. I do know that it would block the east lane and half of the west lane. So if we blocked the parking, you would potentially have enough space for one lane of traffic to go through. If we did decide to do this, I would prefer that we just block the street and reroute traffic for some period of time.
So the page 73 of our packet doesn't clarify what four days they're requesting. So I think before we could approve this, what we need to know specifically, what dates they want it to be closed? So should we not motion to table this until we know those defined dates, Grant?
As it says, because of overhead lines, they cannot set up behind the building.
And what portion of Main Street are they wanting to block, just Shawnee and Muskogee?
Excellent questions.
Well, they were talking about, it says in here somewhere, from Downing to Shawnee. To Shawnee? Yes.
Yes, King?
To answer Bree's question, whenever I spoke to Wayne, when he brought it to my attention, and I brought it to the mayor's attention, I asked him when they were wanting to start, because a lot of times they'll notify people along and stuff like that, so they're aware of the traffic adjustment. He said it was kind of up to us when we allowed it to start.
Or if?
If, if or when.
I like that.
Because I asked him if it was going to be like mid-September, or what we had, he's like, well, it's kind of up to county.
I'd want to put up some kind of a good surety policy that if they tear up Main Street, they fix it, because...
It is a concern, yes.
We needed some leverage on AT&amp;T for quite some time. I would suggest just flat out tell them no, and we'll get back to you. That's the same answer we've got for the last 25 years on that title? Say no.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Negotiate.
Yeah, we'll give, we'll give them four days to take this thing out of there.
Yeah, if they were removing it.
I mean, at the end of the day, though, this is an administrative...
I just want to just word to them.
They can apply to close, they can go to talalaw.com and apply for a street closure, and pay the dollar, pay the, however fine it is, and close the block of a street, and it's an administrative process.
But they would have to bring it to the council if it was going to be...
But they would have to bring it to the council if it was going to be a...
Yeah, for over a certain period of time. You can't do it for four days.
But they don't need four days. Well, I just, I think... I mean, I'm not, I'm not setting up your AT&amp;T's guy in the council. I'd rather them take that one thing down.
So, can we tell them like Thanksgiving, Christmas, New Year's Eve, which four days?
But I think we also have to be, I mean, you've got homecoming coming up, both Talalloy High School and NCU. I mean, it's a, of course, you can't throw rockets down at a festival, right?
And just for reference, it started out as two days whenever we initially spoke and I related to the mayor.
What were they trying to do? Anyway, change the light bulb?
Hmm?
Change the light bulb? What's the deal?
Wayne would do something that hard.
I mean, I would wonder if it has anything to do with the new towers that they're building, putting stuff on there.
So, are we still going to have a mid-month meeting since we have a special meeting?
Yes, we do have a special meeting on the 16th.
So, do we know if Wayne will be able to join us on the mid-month meeting?
He is not here because of a family emergency, so...
Oh, so we don't know.
But I would assume that he would be here.
Okay.
I'm going to motion to table this until October 1st.
October 7th, October 7th.
I will just put the asterisk on there and say, it doesn't necessarily sound like it's Wayne that we need to talk to.
He's got a first year.
It sounds like AT&amp;T is who we really want to have those discussions with.
I'll say it.
All right, thank you.
It's not Wayne that we really need necessarily to talk to. It's AT&amp;T. Unless Wayne wants to talk to you.
I'd like to talk to Wayne and find out what he thinks about the street. Like you said, that crane may be a ton of terrorists.
I would be curious if they're asking to close it down 24 hours a day, and they're going to work an eight-hour shift? Or are they going to work 24 hours a day?
And they work at night. You know, when I went to Florida, they did this magical thing where they did all their street work at night when people weren't driving around.
Magic.
Magic, right?
It's a good question. Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Okay, so we have a motion table to October 7th?
Second.
It was our second by hires.
Oh, third.
Our second, then.
Roll call?
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 14, discussion of possible action to accept the donation of a 2015 Chevy one-ton truck with four-door cab from NOPBFA, not F.A. Again, this is Commissioner Riles, and he is recommending this. It has a little bit of engine work that needs to be done, but it's something that can be done in shop. And he feels that this truck would be of value to his department.
A motion to approve, as presented.
There's a motion in the second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item 15, discussion possible action to authorize the city attorney and city clerk to allow the Cherokee County District Attorney's Office and Cherokee County Sheriff's Office to review the official sealed executive session minutes from the June 7, 2019 city council meeting.
I will make a motion that we authorize the city attorney and the city clerk to allow the Cherokee County District Attorney's Office and Cherokee County Sheriff's Office the chance to review the sealed executive session minutes from June 7 and then place back in the sealed envelope without retaining a copy.
We have that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, item number 16, we have a proposed executive session. Do we have a motion to exit regular session and enter into executive session? Discussion regarding city's employment agreement with the city administrator Edward Carr.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? There is a motion second. Can we have roll call?
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Returning the session at 10:57.
I just talk in the bigger circle.
Item number 17, discussion of possible action regarding city's employment agreement with the city administrator Edward Carr.
I would like to make a motion to terminate the city administrator Edward Carr, Edward Carr's employment agreement for legal cause affected today, September 3, 2019, and direct Mayor Sue Katrin to provide written notice to Edward Carr specifying the reasons for such termination.
Second.
There is a motion in the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none. We have roll call. Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number 18, discussion on mid-month special meeting. We have a mid-month meeting scheduled for September 16.
At 6:00 P.M.
At 6:00 P.M. Thank you, Stephen.
So, when do we go to our training?
That is at 6:00 P.M.
I think that meeting will start with the training and then go into other items.
On to you.
Yes.
So, we'll definitely get a taco truck that night.
Okay, it's a deal.
Taco truck. We should budget one of those in the city budget.
Item number 19, adjournment. Anybody interested?
Some have.
Second.
Can we have roll call?
Councilor Ratliff?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Combs?
Yes.
Councilor Hires?
Yes.
Motion carried.